Six o'clock. To open session on the closed session. The meeting is ordered, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson. Mayor Sandu.
Here. I would like to ask the attorney any reportable action on that closed session.
There was no, there was no reportable action.
All right, please stand up for the silent chair. Tina, could you read, please, statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Legal Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, December 20th and Saturday, December 21st at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Counsel, any agenda approval, addition, or deletion? I would like to move the item number, item number, the item number Q, you know, the staff comment after the item number H, after a public comment.
Comments by staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, the item number Q, the comments staff I would like to move after because this is a really important thing. It's going to come from the staff in the beginning of the meeting.
Mayor Sandu, staff would also like to pull, under Finance Department, item number one, the revenue enhancements for fiscal sustainability. And as will become more clear after public comment, the reason why we're pulling it is just the lack of our ability to display technology tonight and to provide both you and the community the full presentation. And but for that reason, we would be moving forward with it. And the reasons for our lack of ability to be able to do that will become clear after public comment.
Thank you. Any discussion with the council in these two items we're going to move out? All right, everybody's okay? All right, any presentation? I don't think so.
No.
We have no presentation. Public comments, Tina.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered. At this time, we have one item from Bob Ballyer.
Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm here on behalf of the Commission on Marketing to thank you for your support of the Commission, specifically the Resource Center that's been in operation over a half a year. And as a way of saying thank you, I want to present with you, present to you each individually, the new 2020 resource calendar that I put together. And that will be available to the public at different locations, city locations and other locations, so they can take avail, they avail themselves of it. And the fact of the matter is that you guys actually funded this calendar. So I thank you for that. And I may be coming to you for a little bit more so we can get more calendars than we were able to purchase this time. So if I have your permission, I'll come over to the dice. Is that okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll take hers. Yes.
So again, thank you very much and Merry Christmas to you all.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Merry Christmas.
All right, next agenda item is a comment by the staff.
Mayor Sandu, members of the council, members of the community, as you, as the council is aware, the city was attacked by a ransomware placement of malware on our city computer system in the early morning hours yesterday. The malware appears to have initially entered the city's system through our 24-hour operations at the police department and ultimately migrated to City Hall. Several servers and the City Hall phone system have been implicated, which has frozen the operative computer systems consisting of, you know, all of our, the software that, server software that holds our documents and many of our data sources, both in the police department and at City Hall, as well as our Microsoft Exchange Server. And as I mentioned, it has also implicated our phone system. Our phone system is VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol, and requires software on the server to operate, and that is not possible. So we're confident that this is, at this point, that this is a ransomware attack because we received a ransom note. The ransom note displays itself and provides instruction on where to go to find out what the ransom is. And we don't know the dollar figure of the ransom because we have taken the decision not to pursue that route. And I'll get into the details of how we reached that determination in just a minute. We have cybersecurity insurance. And that insurance is provided to us through the Northern California City Self-Insurance Fund, which is approximately 25 or so cities that pool all of their liability, workers' compensation, property, and in this case, cybersecurity needs together as a cost-effective way of self-insuring. It is the recommendation, or has been the recommendation, of our cybersecurity insurance firm to not go forward with pursuing payment of the ransom in exchange for an encryption key because in the end, you ultimately have to rebuild your systems anyway. They may provide you an encryption key, and it may, it may unlock files, but the malware remains on the system, and that is unacceptable. We, our, through our insurance company, we have been working, employed through the insurance, a forensics firm to take over the systems that we have here in the city and to track how the bad actors gained entry to the system, what the bad actors did while they were in the systems, how they left the systems, and to determine if there are any other issues that we should be concerned about relative to this attack. The firm that we chose is a firm that is recommended by our insurance carrier. If we follow the predetermined plan of action of our insurance carrier in these instances, we receive double the coverage from our insurance carrier. So for instance, amongst many other aspects of the policy, we have a standard $2 million liability insurance. If we follow their plan of action using their pre-selected group of forensic consulting firms and special counsel, we double that liability to $4 million. Our payment for special counsel doubles from half a million to a million. And so it's a pretty easy business decision to realize that when these sorts of things happen, it's happened before, happens to many people. The insurance carrier tells me it's at epidemic levels. Happens in both the public and private sector. Happens more in the private sector than the public sector, but we don't hear about that because in the, in the public sector, we clearly have transparency requirements to let the public know when this sort of situation occurs. So we are working through our insurance carrier, both with special legal counsel to assist us in managing any potential liabilities, as well as determining exactly what happened and when. That assessment began within the first 24 hours. And we have also begun charting a pathway towards recovery of our individual systems. Each of those systems will need to be stripped down basically to nothing and then rebuilt so that we can be certain, again, in concert with our insurance carrier, that all the malware has been removed from our systems before we redeploy them. In cases where that hasn't occurred, the malware reactivates itself and you're back to square one. So a very deliberate, methodical approach is what is necessary in these instances. The Sacramento County Information Technology Department has offered the city and provided the city with a loner server that meets our specifications and is quite powerful. And we are working, as we speak, to utilize that loner server for purposes of rebuilding our accounts with the hope and clear desire to be back online sooner rather than later. This afternoon, at the request of the Federal Bureau of Investigation and the California Department of Justice, the Governor's Office of Emergency Services Cybersecurity Unit was on scene, working with our staff and evaluating our systems. They have taken certain information and are going to be back on site tomorrow in force to help us, to be there, to gather salient information from the systems that they use in trying to track down these cybersecurity perpetrators. But again, as they caution and note, a very methodical approach to this is necessary in order to be able to capture that important data. So that leads us to timing in how we ultimately resolve this event and get our computer systems throughout the city and phone system back up and running. And we are working diligently to try to do that, but the timing, candidly, is uncertain. We're hoping that, and working, trying to plot a course, that that might be up by the end of this week or early next week. But again, when you're working with technology, depending on the particulars of the systems that you're stripping down and then rebuilding, you may incur other issues along the way that take time. And so we clearly ask for the patience of the public as we deal with this, assuring the public that all of our services are here at the city. We're providing service, notwithstanding the fact that our Voice Over Internet Protocol system was, is implicated here. Our emergency 911 capabilities were not affected by this ransomware attack. 911 is fully operational. The dispatch center is operational, is taking calls for service. And we are able to provide good, proper, robust safety to members of the, of the public. We've provided, late last night, provided a media release to media outlets in an effort to get the word out. Broadcast media was on site here at City Hall today, conducting some interviews, again, beneficial to informing the public as to what has happened, why they end up in a loop if they call City Hall and no one answers the phone. And we also released a press, or issued a press release this afternoon that provided temporary phone numbers for each department for the public to call. So if you need some, it's also on our Facebook page. And so if members of the public have a call for recreation or finance or community development or the city clerk's office, there is, on our Facebook page, is a copy of that media release. It has the various numbers now. That is an effort to have a line of communication to the city. It is clearly not as robust as our normal phone system. So it's possible that you may get tripped over to voicemail if that happens. We'll call members of the public back. And clearly, when we, when the phone is answered, we'll take messages the old-fashioned way and we'll, we'll do our level best to return the phone calls in a timely manner. Our email systems do not work. And so really, some of the only ways to communicate with City Hall is to avail yourself of the numbers that are on our Facebook site, on our website, and call or come to the appropriate city department for services. But to underscore the fact that we're open for service, we're figuring out, you know, we're actually returning, for old guys like me, we're returning to how we used to do service. For millennials, it's a wide-eyed experience because we don't have the computer networks that they're used to. But nonetheless, we're open for business. We'll do our level best to provide services we can to the community. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
I have a few questions. Tom, first of all, thank you for being so quick to jump into this. I know you've been like on this nonstop. And I know we were texting last night and you were basically on conference calls. It was like 10 o'clock, I don't know, it was late. So you've been on this and I appreciate that. And there was a little bit of comments from the public, like why, delay in the statement. But I understand, you know, we had to evaluate. I want everybody to understand that we had to evaluate kind of what happened before we said anything. And but I'm glad we got that out there. Could you please, I want to just clarify to debug a couple bits of information. The difference between a breach and an attack. As far as we know right now, there's no information been stolen. It's only, we've, basically, our data is just, our software that accesses our data has basically been disabled, that we can't use it. So it's not that we've lost data and we can, there's been some speculation, like we can just do a backup. Can't we just do a backup from, back, but it's the software that's being held. So we can't, even if we had a good backup, it's not, it's not that simple.
The reason why they call it ransomware is it's a typical hostage situation. In this case, they're holding your data and your software capabilities hostage because they've gone in and changed things like all the extensions on all the documents. You couldn't possibly open them if you wanted to without, in theory, without the encryption key. The experience of the industry is that when you get the encryption key, it doesn't open any, everything anyway. But you're right, this is an attack. It's seizing the systems and holding them hostage in pursuit of a payment of ransom. We do not have any indication. And this is agreed upon by a number of independent sources, independent of the city, through the consulting firms we're using. As well as, as of late this afternoon, there was no indication even to members of the Governor's Office of Emergency Services that there was any data breach. A data breach is when data is stolen. And there is no indication thus far that anything like that occurred, but rather that this is the usual and customary ransomware attack where they freeze you out of your systems, hoping you'll pay money to get back in.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I just have a quick question and first a comment. Thank you for getting on this as quickly as you did and also our information technology group, who came in well before their shift on Monday and did everything they could to protect as much of our system as possible. It's greatly appreciated. A quick question that I've gotten from the public is, is there any timeline for two things? One, for us to be back up and running normally, whatever that is, to the, for the public's perspective? And then also, is there any indication at this early stage of long-term what that's going to mean for the city in terms of bringing things back and being able to be free of the ransomware?
So again, our desire is to be back up by the end of the week. It is unclear, as I say that to you tonight, that that will actually happen. But it is a goal that we are striving for. It is dependent on many variables, some of which are changing hour by hour based on things that we discover or issues that we run into with respect to those systems. My gut tells me it may be into next week before we're able to bring some of these systems back up in a limited way, or at least back, we may be able to bring them back up, but they may not be able to be deployed to all of the desktops because we have, we have many desktops in this city, 30 of which, or around 30, approximately 30, we believe are implicated by the ransomware itself as well. So each of those desktops will need to be stripped down and built back up in order to be placed back into service. And so that's kind of the timing. Was there another angle to your question that I didn't answer?
When will we know? Or is there any indication right now at the end of the day where we could report out to the public exactly what happened?
And so that goes back to this, our insurance carrier's forensic team, who has deployed a type of software across our various systems to extract out all that information. They will be issuing to us a report or schematic of what happened, when it started, where it went, you know, and all of that. And we will be able to provide a, when we receive that, we'll be able to provide a report to the council now. That may not be next week. I mean, they, so they're clearly taking on a lot of data. They now have to sort through all that. And they have computerized analysis aids that help them, but it isn't an instantaneous process. And so as soon as we know, we'll be providing a after-action report, if you will, or of sorts, to the council and to the public as to this incident. As to how we, you know, prevent it in the future, it's interesting that, again, both our IT staff, as well as those independent entities that are now on board helping us, at this point, at the moment that I'm speaking to you now, all agree that there is no indication that any firewall of our city's systems was breached in any way. And so what that may indicate, may indicate, is that the ransomware, as it very often is, is what they refer to as invited in because, you know, the errant email is clicked on or, you know, something happened. We don't even know if the ransomware was sitting dormant on our system for days, weeks, or months and was activated, or if it was a manual attack that started at 12:55 a.m. on December 16th. That is all information that we'll have to ultimately gain from those people, including the Governor's Office of Emergency Services that evaluate these systems. Incidentally, the firm that we are using for these forensics is a key partner. This is happenstance. We didn't know it when we ultimately selected them, but is a key partner of the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. They provide services to CalOES on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. And I just think that, you know, we get as much information out, accurate information out, as we can when we can. And I say accurate information because I find that when we don't get information out, people, you know, you connect dots that may not be able to be connected. And so as often and as soon as we can get that information out, it would be greatly appreciated.
Indeed.
Councilmember Lamson? Anything? The only thing I really like to appreciate, Tom, last night he sent a message to middle of the night what was happening. He's very proactive and I believe at this stage is, this is very kind of investigation process. And I'd like to ask, as soon as you get any update, let us know or let the public know.
Absolutely. And I have to underscore that, you know, I rely on a professional staff to react in a situation. This is akin to a type of disaster that can strike a community. It can be an earthquake, it can be a fire, it can be catastrophic loss of data and things like that. And all of these things represent a potential danger to the community or the danger of not being able to provide public services. And yet, we have a police department that knows how to react, knows how to retool, adapt, improvise, overcome, right? And that's what they do. But in the case, and that's what they've done in this instance, and in the case of the advent of this entire ransomware attack, as soon as our IT folks were informed in the middle of the night of what was occurring, they knew. Our IT director sent the closest-in staff person to start disconnecting, unconnecting all of the various systems. And that is credited because he recognized, our IT manager recognized that this was in all likelihood a ransomware attack. And we believe that that quick action And we believe that that quick action is what led to the prevention of the ransomware migrating to the computerized systems at our wastewater treatment facility. And, and, you know, also may have mitigated the migration of the ransomware to other of our systems within the city. So I appreciate the, the comments of the council, but I, I truly have to share those kind words with the staff that is, or the boots on the ground that are running all of this down, and that's the three members of our IT department, supported by all the department heads and staff within their departments to, to do what needs to be done to respond to this incident.
One last thing, just to add. So just to clarify to the public, paying utility bills and billing and all that, is that being?
Still do it, absolutely. We're, we're taking.
Somebody wants to pay their utility bill, they just need to come in. What about auto? If people have auto pay and all that, how's this?
Electronic payments are still being accepted.
Okay.
It still works just fine.
Okay.
And the front office is open if you want to come in and pay your bill that way.
Some of the things we can't do in the payment is, I think, credit cards. And maybe that's more for Parks and Recreation, but are you still unable to take credit cards?
That's correct. There are no credit cards. And then we couldn't take payments for, let's say you wanted to rent the Littleton Center. We don't know if it's reserved that day, so we wouldn't be taking any payments for that type of thing, or any type of class that has a maximum amount of a participant, because we don't know if we would overfill the class. But everything else we'll be able to do with cash or check.
Okay.
We're also taking care of the flea market. We're, we're back to old school when me and Tom were out there doing everything through booth tracker, getting all their information. They emailed some rosters, and we're doing everything manually now.
Okay. Just want to clarify that, because it was one of the questions that Rich made me think of it, that people have been asking. So thank you again.
All right. Before we move the next thing, any public comment? I believe Bonnie asked, can you?
One last quick thing while Bonnie comes to the podium. I don't believe that this meeting is being livestreamed because our system has been implicated. We are taping it, and we will upload it to the website when we can, but it is not being livestreamed.
Thank you.
So I don't know how to follow that, because, you know, it's one of those things where it's pretty sad, but you're also, I also felt very proud of how quickly the city responded. So I really appreciate it. I, you know, kept thinking, gosh, Tom's a rock star, but I guess he has all the backup singers too, so that's awesome. So thank you, city, for taking care of all of that and, and watching out for us. I think that's great. On behalf of the chamber, as the outgoing president, I thought I'd come up and say a few words. Our chamber, just so if, so that everybody's aware, you know, every two years we shift out, and so Rochelle Herron Dean is our new president. But as the outgoing president and having worked with the city over the last two years and working with the city in my position at work anyway, I just wanted to share my gratitude to current council and the outgoing mayor. She and I can go party now that we have more time. And I appreciate all the hard work that she did over the, the last year and representing our city. She was very, or I should speak right to you, Paige, you were wonderful at, you know, all of the events and, and, you know, running the, the meetings and really appreciated you as mayor. So thank you for all of the time and effort and everything you put in. With that said, I just have to tell a really quick story. We all were here to, at the last meeting when our new mayor, Paul Sandu, said he was available 24/7. I just want to say that right after he said that, after that meeting, I walked up and said, okay, so you're going to be there to swear in the chamber board? And he said, no, I won't be here. So he got that out of the way, but I did want to congratulate our new mayor, and I am very much looking forward to working with him, both on the professional and I still am on the board with the chamber. But he, as, as many of you know that Paul was our, Mr. Mayor, was on our chamber board. He actually stepped down to be able to serve this community in, in the council capacity. We were sad to see him go, but very happy to see him on, on council and are ecstatic to see him in this position and wanted to express to the entire council that we are here to support and to work with, with everybody. And if there's anything that we can do to help with whatever, especially from the paper's standpoint, I know we're only weekly, but we can help get other stuff, other information out as well and, and try to help that way. But congratulations and welcome, and this is, I, I hope everybody reads the Galt Herald, but I'm, I'm sure you read the story about Mayor Sandu and, and really the, the steps that he's taken to get here. It's quite the story. I suggest you look it up. Mr. Sandu has come a long way and, and really has shown us what you can do with a little bit of effort, and it's just amazing. So congratulations. And on that note, I do have a question about, on behalf of the businesses. This malware, if, and you can maybe get back to me, there is a little, there has been a concern from a couple of businesses that do business with the city, especially as far as emails and everything. Do we know if that could have transferred via email? I, I mean, I, you probably don't know the answer right off, but maybe something to think about, asking to, so that our businesses and even personal people can maybe.
Sure, we'll, we'll certainly do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
All right. So we will be a 15-minute recess. My family, they bring light refreshment. I would like to ask, join us. Everybody have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And now it's a 15-minute recess.
The community room, right?
Yes, in the community.
Was it like they even hacked the drive?
Reconvene is from the recess, the meeting. The next agenda item is K, report by city council members and regional board and commission and committees. Vice Mayor Alzano, anything?
Yeah, just, just one item to report on, on boards and commissions. On the 12th, last Thursday, the Sacramento Transportation Authority met, Sacramento Transportation Authority met, and the biggest item on the agenda was the half-cent sales tax proposal and the, the spending plan for that. And so there were quite a few public members there to speak, and so we had to postpone that agenda item until the next meeting in January. And so that is pretty much the highlight for that. SACOG meeting is on Thursday, and so at the next council meeting, I will report back on that. That's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Farmer?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Lamson?
No, we'll do the events at the end.
Councilmember Campion? Can, can you hear?
Nothing, nothing.
Thank you. Information consent calendar.
We need a motion to accept the minutes as submitted, receive and file warrants for the period ending December 4th, 2019, adopt a resolution approving a three-year extension with Soft Choice Corporation for the Microsoft Licensing Agreement, adopt a resolution ratifying the adoption of the Consumers Community Services District's 2019 California Fire Code Amendment, accept the Treasury's, Treasurer's report as submitted.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
So may I have a rule call, please?
It was Farmer. Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion move to five to zero. Next agenda item is regular calendar and public hearing. Public Works Department authorizing city manager to make necessary step to purchase real property for $3,765,060 to use for transit operation and maintenance center project. Mr. Selly?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and councilmembers. I want to start off with a little quick history on this item. Back in 2008, the city initiated efforts to, to locate and construct, if necessary, a transit maintenance and operations facility. At that time, the city received a grant of approximately $3.3 million from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, SACOG, for such a facility. However, after consideration of multiple sites, the council direction back in March earlier this year was to construct a new operations and maintenance facility out at the city's wastewater treatment plant property. Shortly thereafter, this property that we're recommending for purchase tonight at 140 Enterprise Court became available. It was listed for sale. So staff looked into it and determined that it had great potential. After determining, though, that both school districts, who were potential partners in the transit ONM facility, were still some years away, the staff also had to consider whether or not the SACOG grant funding would be eligible. And so we also reached out to SACOG to get a determination from them for that. And again, we were informed that, that purchasing such facility was eligible for the grant funding. And so we basically sought direction from council to, to consider this, this property. Maybe a little bit about the property itself. It's, again, located at 140 Enterprise Court off of Industrial Drive. I wish I had an image here, we could put up to kind of show it. But essentially, it's a, about 3.18 acre piece of property and on which sits a 50,400 square foot building. The building's divided into four spaces, and two of those spaces under a long-term lease. One is a beverage company, and the other is State of California, who stores a bunch of furniture and equipment in there. And then the, the other space that's not occupied by the transit operator is utilized by Cardinal Glass on a month-to-month lease, just to do some intermittent storage, is what they use it for. The, the last space, as I noted, is currently utilized by STORE, who's the transit operator in this area for the South County Transit, and they have about 13,000 square feet of the building. So we looked at the property and, and, you know, with those other tenants in there, there's a potential of approximately 120,000 or so in revenue from the leases annually from those other spaces. So that we saw as a, as a potential benefit to the city too. So we got the direction from council to go ahead and negotiate, and we have negotiated a tentative purchase price of $3.70 million. The property was listed for 4.03 million, so there's about, you know, a little over $300,000 lower than the listing price. And the sale is conditional upon approval by council. And also, when you do a real estate transaction, you have to do a, what we call a phase-one investigation. It's a hazardous materials investigation. So, so we have a consultant that's performing that, and we expect to get those results probably, hopefully, the, the end of this month, if not very early in January. So the sale would also be condition, conditional upon that analysis coming back with no significant findings. So as far as the money side of the transaction goes, the city has currently about $1.5 million in, in transit funds for this purchase and would propose to use an intra-fund loan from the, the streets fund to cover the balance of, of the transaction. And the SACOG funds, the $3.3 million, again, initially, you know, awarded in 2008, and SACOG's been kind of carrying it forward for us. That money is programmed for us in 2021, so we would need to essentially, you know, cash flow until that time when we could get the SACOG funds in early 2021. So that's where we're at on it, and I and, and city manager, finance director, available to answer any questions. Thank you.
I know this has been a long process for you guys, and I really appreciate you guys negotiating and getting the price down a little bit, and looks like a winning situation for everybody. Andy?
I just want to cover a few things. I know we've, you know, discussed this at length, and I appreciate Mike, you know, going out and negotiating and getting that better price on the property and all that was very good. So just some history, you mentioned that, you know, this is something we already proved to move forward on in order to use the SACOG money we have. So once we get the SACOG money in 2021, we get it all at one time?
Correct.
And so at that point, even though we're, we're cash flowing until then with some, some money we have now, once we get that, essentially, what would be the net? I mean, we're not, none of this is general fund money. We're not.
Correct.
Essentially, in 2021, this whole deal will have been funded by SACOG.
Well, the 3.3 million will, the, the balance due would be funded from other transit funds.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, right. So what are the, tell me, like you told us before, what are some of the advantages to buying this property versus building one from scratch, like we had originally kind of talked about in March?
Sure. So to, if we were to, you know, we looked at, and we had started efforts on building, you know, designing and, and going through the environmental process and whatnot for a facility out at the wastewater treatment plant site. That estimate, engineer's estimate, came in about $5.3 million. So this is going to be, you know, approximately a little over a million and a half dollars cheaper. Also, you've got the timeframe. We were going to be under a pretty significant, you know, time crunch in order to get that facility built in time for the SACOG funds, because SACOG had carried those funds forward for the last 10 years, essentially. We were kind of on our, our last extension, if you will, for that money. Otherwise, it would be utilized elsewhere, and we would have lost that grant funding. So, so this gives us the opportunity to, you know, ensure that we utilize that grant funding. We don't have that time constraints. We can use, you know, our staff resources for other projects kind of thing now, if, if the council were to approve this tonight, rather than having to utilize them and consultants to, you know, design and, and process a facility out at the treatment plant site. That's another benefit. As I kind of touched on earlier, this property has a potential for some additional revenue generation for the city. We estimate probably somewhat conservatively about $120,000 a year for the city. So, so there's additional revenue from this property as well. The, the other thing about owning the building is, while right now, and we don't see any need to expand the transit services for the foreseeable future, there is additional space there, you know, potentially to utilize one of the other tenant spaces if we did need to, you know, need more space for the transit operations. So it gives us that, that flexibility too. The building's in, in good shape. We've had it looked at, the construction, it's definitely a premium construction, not like some of the, the cheaper industrial properties. So it's been well-maintained, and so we feel that it's a, a really quality property to purchase, so.
And so we're going to use about 13,000 of the 50,000, so roughly, so roughly, we're going to use about a quarter of it. So three-quarters of it is tenant, tenant occupied?
Correct.
And so the 120,000 is net revenue. That's after our estimated maintenance costs of maintaining the building and whatever. So we're still, we're roughly netting 120 a year?
Yes, and that's basically, yes, exactly, for paying for all the ongoing, you know, maintenance and also for capital replacement as well. So that's, that, all of that has been taken out, the, the taxes and everything like that, utilities. All of those costs have been deducted already, and that 120 is the net after all of that.
Well, I personally really like the idea. I think, you know, looking at pros and cons, which I did, I don't, I find very few cons at all. I was actually not really in favor in back in March of the wastewater treatment plant, if you remember, only because I just felt like it was so far out of the city that I felt transit times and things would be a factor, although I was told they probably wouldn't be, but I just, that was my feeling on it. I feel like this was more centered in the city, so Public Works traversing back -- on it. I feel like this is more centered in the city. So Public Works traversing back and forth to that. If the school district gets involved, you know, buses and stuff, I still feel like it's more centered. So for those reasons, I really like it. I like the fact that we're going to get revenue off of it. I also like the fact that we negotiated very hard and we got it for less than asking price. And so for those reasons, I think it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a turnkey thing, so to speak. I mean, there's some work to be done. But so, yeah, that's my feeling on it. And thank you for answering those questions.
Sure.
I just have a couple of comments. First, I think this is a good business deal for the citizens. And I think I appreciate your, the team's hard work in getting a good price for the property. One of the things that has come up a couple of times since the staff report was published is, excuse me, the hazardous materials investigation. There have been some concerns in the community that we are buying a property that has hazardous material on it. And so could you clarify what that is and how that works?
Yeah, essentially, a Phase 1 investigation is simply kind of a record search, if you will. They will go out and take some soil samples as well, run those through the lab to see if there's anything there. But, you know, records, sometimes property may have, you know, been a facility where it, you know, maybe it was a former gas station or maybe some kind of repair facility that had chemicals or whatnot, you know, a chemical storage facility or something like that. And if there was a spill, you know, what's the contamination? And because hazardous materials, you know, have expensive price tags to clean up those kinds of things. So they do an investigation on that. And this building is basically, was built in, I think it was 2006 or so, and has been utilized as a warehouse from day one. So we don't anticipate any findings coming back, but still, you have to do your due diligence. If there were something significant found, we would have to probably go back and negotiate with the seller potentially at council's direction, you know, depending on what it might cost to clean up, or we could simply walk away from the deal. So those would be our options.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Campion, if you have any comment?
No comments.
Thank you. I believe this deal is a very good deal because when Mike was doing the negotiation, he did very hard negotiation. You know, the property was sold on for a while for $4 million. As you know, the seller's usually down when the property not sold, though he get a good deal. But my question, not the question, just clarification, for the transit operation, we already decide two time previously to buy the property, right? One is wastewater, one is the other property. And can you explain why we changing our view?
Yeah. So going through maybe, I think what you're touching on, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was back in 2011, the city did purchase a property over near the existing corporation yard and then started the process for, you know, citing a facility there. And as my understanding goes, through that environmental process, it was determined that it was not really a feasible property for that, I think, due to a few reasons. One was just proximity to some other residential area, but also ingress and egress from the property, too. There's a railroad there that, you know, provides some challenges and whatnot, too. So my understanding, again, is that for those reasons and others potentially, that it was determined an infeasible site for a transit O&M facility.
Well, my understanding, when they bought the property, they might we don't do them or do diligent that property before they buy it. When they buy it, then after they buy it, then they was looking what was the problem, right?
Yeah, that's speculation on my part. I, you know, obviously, I wasn't here. You know, I don't know that I could really speak to that, so.
Thank you. The other, my question is, just kind of clarification, you know, we are using the fund from another department, right?
Correct.
Like in kind of loan?
Correct.
And can you clarification that loan, how long it can take to pay back, or there is any interest or something that department have to pay back to the other department?
Yeah, I'll initiate. And obviously, if Claire or Tom has anything they want to add, by all means. So essentially, we have about $1.5 million in our transit funds currently. And so we would look to borrow the remainder from the Streets Fund, which has adequate funding to fund the balance for the purchase. And then, like I said, in 2021, when we get the grant funds from SACOG, that money would come in, reimburse the Streets Funds. And but because the Streets Funds loaned revenue to the transit fund, there would be an interest, I think they call it a, I forget, LEAF, a LEAF rate. And so I'll let them explain the acronym. I don't recall it.
And the LEAF rate is that, so as Sean Farrell, our treasurer, has indicated in his report, we have significant funds from across the spectrum, significant monies across the spectrum of funds of the city invested in what's referred to as a local agency investment fund, LEAF. And that earns a particular interest rate. And so the inter-fund loan borrowing will come with an interest rate pegged at the LEAF rate, so that the fund making the loan will make the same interest it otherwise would have made on its funds had it not made the loan. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. The same thing, this property, Mike, you explaining to the public because they are, we also, after we get the property, there is a tenant out there. So that we can get some kind of income until the project is completed. And what's your deadline to something estimate when that process be completed or kind of in operation?
So for, well, currently, the transit operation exists out there at the facility today. And so that would basically continue seamlessly. As far as the real estate transaction, we would probably hope to close that in, I would say, a 30- to 60-day escrow period, so.
Okay, thank you. I would like to open the public hearing. Any public comment? Can I close the public hearing? Any discussion?
Yeah, one more item, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick. Speaking of the interest rate, so what's the expected, so we only be paying interest on the inter-fund loan until the SACOG money came in, right? So we're only looking at doing inter-fund loan for what, a year?
I'd say a year to 18 months, max.
Okay, so 18 months, let's say 18 months.
Yeah.
So what, how much money do we expect to pay in interest over the 18-month period?
I don't know what the LEAF rate is, so I would defer to...
The LEAF rate is currently 2.1.
Okay. So I'm curious, and we're borrowing 2. What is it we're borrowing? 2.2 million? 2.25 million is what we're borrowing or something like that?
Yeah, about, yeah, a little over 2.2.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious if the revenue, the net revenue after our costs, you know, the maintenance of the 120,000 a year is going to offset the interest. I'm just wondering how the math works out on that. If we're actually going to still end up paying a little bit because of interest, or we're actually going to not pay any interest because our revenue on the property will cover that interest? Just curious.
The revenue will actually come into a different fund, so they don't actually mirror up. But the fund that's loaning out the money, if they didn't loan out the money, they would be earning that interest. And so whether they invest it or they loan it out, it's kind of a wash for them in that perspective.
Just a quick calc. This is, you know, ballpark. I would say you're probably looking at about 50,000 in interest or so.
We saved six times that just on negotiations, right? Roughly?
Yeah.
Well, not only that, but a conventional loan would be much more expensive. So really, a municipality typically opts for the inter-fund loan option if it can, if it has funds with sufficient monies to loan, in an effort to not incur interest costs through more conventional means. So as Claire indicated, that really, the underlying fund making the loan would have earned the same interest if it didn't make the loan. So we're just making sure that when the money gets paid back, it also gets the interest that it would have otherwise earned.
And then the last thing I just wanted, just for the public's knowledge, just to reiterate this, this money that we're borrowing from another fund, this is not, this is not being purchased with general fund money. I just want to clarify to the public that, you know, all this financial budget things we've been working on and trying to, you know, get through this budget shortfall we have, has nothing to do with this property. This is not money that could be used for that. We can't borrow money from the Street Fund to pick up the slack in the general fund. I mean, you know, that, this is, this is so, a lot of people are saying, why are we buying property? Why are we spending that kind of money when we have to chop, you know, this or that? Or we have to raise sports fees and all that. But I want to just squash all that, and this is, this has nothing to do with that.
Correct, yeah. No general fund here. This would be Streets Fund, and you can't use the Streets Funds for those other purposes, so.
All right.
Without loaning it to yourself, so to speak, so.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other discussion among the council member?
Mayor, I want to, I want to make one point here. I want to recognize Carlos Solario of our staff. He was key in, first of all, finding this property, but also in doing a lot of the legwork and doing the research and coordinating with the seller's agents and whatnot. So Carlos was very instrumental in this, in this effort. So I want to recognize him.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you. Tina, could you read the recommended action?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related documents for the purchase of 140 Enterprise Court, APN 1500011080, authorizing the appropriation of $3,765,060 in the Transit Operations and Maintenance Center Capital Improvement Project, CIP 59D, and three, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an inter-fund loan between Streets Fund and Transportation Fund and related documentation to purchase property of 140 Enterprise Court until the Transportation Fund has received all remaining funds for this purchase.
May I have a motion on that recommendation?
Removed.
Second.
Tina, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion pass with zero five. Thank you. Next agenda is communication.
Nothing.
City clerk.
All right. This is for the city council meeting of January 7, 2020. As in the past, the first city council meeting in 2020 falls on January 7. Due to the city's holiday schedule towards the end of December and staffing schedules, it would be difficult to prepare the packet in the amount of time allotted. Do you have any questions on nothing?
Just a comment. I think that in my conversations with the city manager, we also have a pretty light, if not anything, to put on.
That's correct. We don't have any agenda items that require action by the council on that date.
Are you going to close the public?
Okay. Next.
We need to vote on that.
Roll call vault, because we're trying to get a good motion.
I'll make a motion to cancel the city council meeting of January 7, 2020.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion pass with zero to, five to zero. Thank you.
All right. Number two is the review of city committees and commissions. On November 7, 2017, city council directed staff to place on the agenda on an annual basis a review of standing committees and commissions. At this time last year, city council amended the requirements of the committees and commissions for consistency. Adding up to two members of each commission and committee may reside outside city limits, but within the GALT Joint Union High School District. Also, the GALT Youth Commission was amended to add up to two members of the commission may reside outside the city limits, but within the boundaries of the GALT Joint Union High School District. And of those two members, up to one member may be at large. And a member at large is defined as a person that is employed within the boundaries of the GALT Joint Union High School District, but resides outside the boundaries of the GALT Joint Union High School District. Do you have any other changes or questions at this time, requirements?
I actually have some questions about the youth commission. It's a little, the verbiage is a little confusing because there's 10 youth commissioners. But the verbiage here says, "The commission receives the values and pit from committee on issues of teen, serves as a resource and advocate to the city council on teen issues." And then it says, "In order to hold office, a person must be resident." Can we specify that there's 10 youth and then there's five mentors? Because it's kind of confusing in the verbiage. You can't tell if you're talking about the youth commissioner or mentor.
That is farther down in the municipal code. It's just not on this.
It's not on this?
Right.
Okay. So, but this is what we're reviewing, so that's why.
Yeah, the entire municipal code.
Okay.
This is just for the summary of it.
So then what's the point of the review?
City council asks to bring it back every...
To see if we wanted to add or change anything?
Because last year, we did the changes to boundaries, that type of thing.
Right. Okay.
So if I can make a couple of comments on this item real quick. I've been very happy. I look at, oh, look over all these commissions and committees, and I feel like they all have a special purpose. I think some are actually, you know, very, very active. Some are not as active as others, but I still feel like they're all, they're all relevant to what they do. If any change I would like to see, honestly, would be that they're just more proactive or even report back regularly, like, say, maybe quarterly, so maybe four times a year. They, you know, not a staff member, but maybe one of the appointees, one of the citizens is appointed, could just come to city council and report on things they've worked on or just say, this is some things we're talking about. Because I feel like, I do talk to my appointees once in a while and kind of get some information on stuff they're talking about. But other than that, we really don't know kind of what's going on unless you're assigned to that committee or commission. I would like to see more interaction between the council and the, and the commissions and committees.
That's a lot of their purpose. It says they're supposed to interact more with the council.
Exactly. And I don't see that that happens a lot.
Especially for safety committees, supposed to make recommendations to council, and I don't see that happening.
I've never seen, I've seen one.
Once. You and I, once.
Seen one.
We got shot down.
So I think there's, there's a lot of relative things that these, these groups could be doing. And I think that, I think I would like to see a regular report of some sort.
Like more regular or bi-yearly or quarterly?
Bi-monthly or quarterly. I mean, quarterly at the least.
Well, like, the safety committee only meets every other month. They meet six times a year. So maybe, maybe just two or...
Maybe six.
Not a big formal...
Yeah, we just put it, you know, in the beginning where we do a presentation. I don't know. How does the council feel about that?
I think that's a great idea. I think quarterly might be a little too often because of some of the committees meeting irregular. But if we did it every, twice a year and then staggered them, we could have a committee once a month make a, make a comment or make a presentation. And I think that would be good.
Yeah.
And then we get that, that regular interaction.
But I would also like to see, you know, for those of you that are listening or they are on a commission or committee, I would like to see, you know, don't just rely on those quarterly where you have, where we expect you to come. I mean, if there's an item, I'd like to see more items be brought to our, to the council's attention. Because I hear things that are being talked about, and I think they're very interesting, and I don't, they never make it this far, so.
You know, that's the same thing. You know, right now, all the, maybe they reported us after a year. So let's start with the two time a year, every six month. So we have more communication. The other thing is every committee, every commission we appointed, so as a council member, we need to communicate with them more so we can get more information from them.
I just need to say this. There are committee members and/or for different committees that do report regularly. And I think we heard one tonight from the Commission on Aging. Bob's here once a month at least, talking about it. So not to say that, that you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, Bob, but I think this is just more of a, a general conversation about every, all the committees and the interaction with the council. But we, I do appreciate you coming. But we, I do appreciate you coming.
What about public question?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I would like to see some of the other commissioners do what Bob does, where they kind of, on their own, and just kind of say, here's what's going on. I would, I like the updates.
You come in every month.
Does Kurt have any comments? Kurt, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I, I would be okay with, you know, maybe twice a year. I, I think a lot of information is already out there. I mean, you have the agendas, and if you're interested, you know, obviously the minutes are available, and personal contact with the committee members is, you know, certainly a possibility as well. I, I don't, I don't know that it's necessary to meet on a quarterly basis. I think that would be difficult from staff perspective, you know, just agendizing the various committees, so, but I wouldn't be in favor of looking at something maybe once or twice a year. I mean, we do it once a year now, so if you want to up it up to, you know, twice a year, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. And I don't know that, you know, if they want to make a physical presentation, that's fine, but I think a written report or, or analysis would be sufficient as well.
Thank you, council member Campion.
Sure.
Any other discussion with the council member?
I'd like to hear the public's to say.
Any public comment? Yeah, come on back.
In my official gen, annual report to you, to the council, I believe I mentioned precisely this matter to you all, that I think the communication between the council and between the commission should be more than what it is right now. And so I have absolutely no problem. I wholeheartedly support the idea of at least twice a year. And as for myself and Mike and the commission that I represent, I will be here, like I usually am, about once a month, and if there's something special, I'll be sure to share it with you like I did today with the resource calendar. And, and then, of course, I'm going to be back at the next council meeting next year to make my, when I make my unofficial report, once it's on the, on the agenda, I'll be probably asking for a little bit of help with regards to getting 200 more calendars, like I mentioned earlier, so I'll mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
You have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to make public comment?
Yeah, sure. Come into the podium, please.
Gail Weber, good evening, council. I really think we should do a presentation twice a year, just a written report or an analysis given to council. You're not allowed to ask questions and get more clarification about what's going on. If I just hand you a written report saying the beautification committee did this and this and this, but you have clarifying questions or you, you know, you want more information, you don't have the opportunity to ask. So I would really prefer to do a presentation twice a year. Thank you.
Instead of public comment, is that what you mean? Instead of public comment?
Well, yeah, if you're going to, I would, maybe you set aside one meeting or something that the committees, like, two committees maybe do a presentation this time, and then maybe another couple of months, another two committees do a presentation, but have that part of the schedule. But I think a regular presentation would be better. At least we come up here and talk to you, not just hand you a written report, so I think that would be better. Thank you.
I think the point that she's making is to, so there can be dialogue. We could say, well, tell us more about that particular thing you've been working on, and there's a chance for us to...
Because public comment...
I, and I totally respect what Councilman Campion said, but I think twice a year. I mean, if, if Councilman Campion said he would be okay with twice a year, I think twice a year is fine. I don't think that's a huge problem to do that, and maybe do a couple, couple, two or three on one meeting, and then two or three can stagger them.
How many committees only meet every other month?
Safety and Measure R.
And Measure R. When does, does Parks and Rec meet every month?
No, I'll probably be requesting every other month.
Every other month, okay.
Just from staff's perspective, especially on the Parks and Rec Commission, sometimes there is no business to discuss. So to come back twice a year, you may just get, nothing was, was done except for information that's passed down from council down to them to make them aware of what's going on.
Okay.
And Measure R meets quarterly.
Okay. Oh, they only meet quarterly?
It may be a case that the Measure R, you know, with respect to Measure R, it's, it's really an issue of, under the provisions of the, the measure that was adopted by the voters, ensuring that the, the money is spent consistent with the provisions of that measure. And since they meet quarterly and candidly, we, the, the first quarter of the year, so where, when we talk a fiscal year, is going to be sometime, I think, in October, after the, the end of that very first quarter of our fiscal year. Oftentimes, be cut between closing out the previous fiscal year and preparing for budget, we, we sometimes don't have the, the, the full information ready and available for the Measure R committee like we would typically at the half-year mark.
Well, and it's technically an advisory committee. It's not, they're not appointed by each council member. Like, the other committees, we each appoint one person, so maybe those committees...
Yeah. You know, my, my only thought is that the, while we clearly track expenses and go over every expense with the Measure R committee at every meeting, the, the, the information for that first quarter is pretty, pretty minimal, and so then they're getting a report at the half-year mark that is clearly much more substantial, and, and so...
Well, maybe if we don't have, maybe, you know, Tina could communicate with them, and if they're not, they don't have any, they're not prepared to make a report at that time, we could just forego having them do their report.
Sure.
So do we need to ask this to be a future agenda item? So would this be requested as a future agenda item to approve? Is that what we would do?
No, this is a item properly identified on the agenda for you to take action.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we ask the commissions and committee, one member of each commission committee, and it doesn't have to be a staff member, so, for cost-wise, to come and make a formal report twice a year to the council.
Anybody on second?
Second. It'd be nice if they all came, but yeah, second.
All right, Tina, may I have your call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passed with zero to five. Thank you.
Okay, the third one, again, at the city council meeting on November 7th, 2017, city council requested an annual review of its appointments to local and regional bodies. I was just going to go through them one at a time in case you make changes. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, and the other thing, if any council member wants to, something different, then we can discuss, and then we can go through.
Okay. So, on the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan Committee, we have Councilmember Campion as the representative. Any changes?
Kurt, Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Are you, are you still going to keep 457, right, the permanent compensation plan committee?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't understand, but there's a question there.
Do you want to stay on the 25, 457?
Yeah, yeah, I'll stay on that. Yes.
Okay, next, the Cities and Schools Together, or known as CAST, we have Councilmember Campion, Lamson, and alternate is Farmer.
I'd like to stay on that committee. How about Councilmember Campion?
I will stay on it as well.
You're okay, Sean?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Galt Youth Commission representative is Councilmember Lamson.
I'll keep that one unless somebody else is dying to have it.
Public Safety Committee, we have Lamson and Sandu.
Would someone else like to take that one?
I would like to take that.
And I will stay on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, just a moment, I got to write it down now.
Okay.
Okay. The City Selection Committee is concurrent with the mayor term, so that is Mayor Sandu. Greater Sacramento Economic Council is the city manager, is the city's voting representative on the Board of Directors unless the city manager delegate, delegates his or her director position to the mayor to serve as an alternate.
Do you want to stay on it or designate?
That's you, city mayor.
That face.
I'll stay on it.
Okay. Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SACOG, is Councilmember Lozano with an alternate, Farmer.
I'd like to remain on that.
Sacramento County Criminal Justice Cabinet is the chief of police. LAFCO is City Rancho Cordova till December 2022. Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District is Lamson with an alternate, Campion.
I'll stay on that one. I enjoyed that one.
I'm good with that as well.
Okay. Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission is with Rancho Cordova until 2020. Sacramento Public Library Authority is Councilmember Farmer, and City of Eilton is the alternate. Sacramento Transportation Authority is Councilmember Lozano with an alternate of Sandu.
I would like to offer the STA up to another council member for one specific reason. Over the year, I have found that it's probably a good idea to have two different representatives for SACOG and STA, just for some continuity amongst the group here. And so I would offer that up to a colleague, should somebody desire to, to fill that.
I will take that. I will take that opportunity for everybody agree on that.
So then we need an alternate?
I'll be an alternate.
Did, did they ask you if you wanted to keep the public library?
I was going to come back to that after we get off this.
Okay.
Did I skip that?
Well, you, yeah, you just kind of read through it. I don't think you asked him.
I wanted to see if someone else would be interested in doing, only because it's been, that's why I asked Paul about the safety committee. I know that's not a regional board, but it's easier for me, as of late, to be making local stuff, and I'm not in Sacramento very often, so if no one else wants to take it, I'll continue, but if someone else is interested, I'd like to relinquish it for a while.
I just got rid of one.
Okay. It's fine, I'll stay.
You'll stay.
Okay, and then, South Sacramento Conservation Agency, we have Councilmember Campion, and alternate is Councilmember Lamson.
I'm still good, I'm good with that.
I'm fine for alternate. He always shows up.
Okay. Any questions or...
Do we need to vote? No.
Any public comment? So, any more discussion with the council member?
So you want, you might want to have a motion to confirm the changes that you just made?
I'll make a motion to confirm the changes made by council regarding appointments to commissions and committees.
Second.
Tina, may I have your vote, please?
She's trying to write everything down. No computer tonight.
I don't write as fast as I type. Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passed with zero to, five to zero. Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is, now we are already done, but I will ask the staff member, which was not, Ms. Tyson, you have any comment?
No, I moved it. Do I do it? Thank you, mayor. I would just like to thank the council, the staff here at the city, and especially the public for their patience during this difficult time, and we'll be up and running as soon as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Salin?
Yeah, a couple of things. I just wanted to say, I attended the Days Inn grand opening, and it was a fantastic event, got to tour some of the rooms, really nice facility, and I think that's going to be a great economic shot in the arm for the city, so look forward to that. You know, I saw that Mr. Solario has already left, but, for the evening, but he recently tendered his resignation. He's got a new opportunity with the city of Stockton, so it's, it's a bittersweet thing. He's, he's been here a couple of years, I understand, and, and I can tell you, in the nine months or so I've been here, he's been just, you know, fantastic to work with. I mean, he just really jumps into stuff and, and does a fantastic job, everything that he's worked on, so we're going to miss him at Public Works, and hopefully we'll be fortunate to find someone, you know, with, well, hopefully equal talent, but, but anyway, I know that's going to be a tall order. He's a fantastic employee, and, and we wish him well, too, though, and I just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development Director?
Yes, just a bit of information. The environmental document for the Climate Action Plan is coming out, actually tomorrow, so I'll plan to put a copy of the Climate Action Plan and the environmental document in your boxes. The, the goal is to have the public comment period open for about 30 days, and then we're tentatively scheduling February for Planning Commission, and then to you in March for approval. So, that should give you plenty of time to read those documents. Not easy reading. If you have any questions when you do get them, please let me know. Like I said, we'll try to get those out. The situation with the computers has given us a little bit of a slowdown, but we will try to get those out to you quickly. Our department is, we are issuing building permits manually, so we are able to do that. We've actually had staff call all outstanding permits, give them the new inspection line, so we think we're actually functioning pretty well from code enforcement and building. Planning is a little bit more challenge for us, but we're, we're confident we'll pull that stuff together, too. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Solis?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, we had a couple of big special events since the last council meeting, so I'd like to thank my market staff, Parks and Rec staff, the PD officers and Public Works staff for all their hard work on the lighting of the night. I know we had some challenges with our tree, but that 5:00 downpour short-circuited something, so when the lights were blinking, the circuit was doing its job by turning off. We, as you can see, we've had it fixed since then. I'd also like to thank staff for their breakfast with Santa event. They had over 200 people attend that event. It was a great event. They were hoping for 75 and 200, and I think 20-plus showed up. I'd like to thank Richard and Cherie Pike for escorting Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus to their bench, and I'd like to personally thank Jackie Garcia, our Special Events Manager, for doing a great job. So, that's it. Oh, and...
Christmas from the kids' table.
Thank you. Jeep Sacramento.
So it's been a, it's been an amazing holiday season. We didn't cancel the parade.
Rich.
No rain during the whole parade. It was, it was amazing. Nobody believes me. Stopped, parade, then it rained again.
I believe you.
So it's been busy. The, the toy drive was a huge success. It's amazing to be able to spread joy to the, to the community and, and to be able to share like that, and thank you for all of you that participated, all the council members and the mayor. And so then the final thing that I want to bring up is on January 15th, at noon, we'll have a wreath laying out here at the Fallen Officer Memorial in front of City Hall for Officer Kevin Ton, who was, this will be the seventh year of his, of his murder, so we're, so anyway, noon on January 15th, if you can put that on your calendar.
Tom, I...
I have nothing further, but I do need to get onto a conference call regarding our ransomware situation.
City Attorney?
I have nothing. Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt Campion, is, and the comment from the council member?
Kurt, any comments?
Uh, no comment. Uh, no comment. Uh, everybody have a happy and safe holiday.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, councilmember Lamson?
I know he's got, he's on his phone. Okay, um, first of all, I want to send out condolences to Galt High School, their, um, the principal's administrative assistant passed away unexpectedly this weekend, so they're dealing with a lot over there. Um, I attended the Chamber Year End Event at Estralita, where they announced Rochelle Herrendine as the president, and I believe Business of the Year. Yep, congratulations to Rochelle. Um, the lighting of the night was fantastic. Thank you for stopping the rain, Armando, you did it again. Um, I attended the Kiwanis Christmas Party, um, the South County Services Lunch was, I liked the way they set everything up, it was great, everybody was there, all the staff, um, in all their sweaters and serving, and the food was pretty good, I have to say. Thank you to the real men. Um, attended the Police Awards, we're honored to see what officers, um, were honored this year. Um, we had the Rotary Community Dinner, which, um, had hundreds of people come and eat. The turkey was good, they were up there in the morning. Um, the Days Inn Grand Open, I attended that, and then today we had the ribbon cutting of Gillies. And let's not forget, Mayor Sandu and I, um, and Bonnie with the chamber stopped by the Senior Club Lunch. So it's been quite the season, so looking forward to Christmas with my family.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozan?
Yeah, it has been, it has been very busy. Um, uh, I attended the Star Dinner for our, our adults and youth with special needs on, on the 6th. Uh, it was a great night, Santa Claus was there, and we had a nice spaghetti dinner, uh, um, provided by the Galt Sunrise Rotary. Um, then the Chamber Holiday Luncheon, where I had the honor of swearing in the new board in, uh, absence of the mayor. Um, that was the one that Bonnie said, he couldn't attend, so anyhow. Uh, Toy Drive at, uh, Station 44 on the 7th went really well.
I forgot that, too.
Probably could do a, a little bit more advertising next year, but it was fine. We, the community always comes out and does a great job, um, and I appreciate all the folks that came out to help, um, with entertainment and collecting of toys and things like that. Um, of course, the lighting of the night and the parade, um, that was awesome. We had great, uh, entertainment inside the Littleton up until the parade, and I was honored to, uh, help with that. Also attended the Firefighters Local 522 Holiday Open House down at the Union Hall on the 11th, of course, the Senior Luncheon on the 12th, the award ceremony also on the 12th, Chief, that was awesome, great job. Um, I only got to get, catch the last part of it, but, uh, it was really good.
You missed my speech, though, that was the best.
Yes. Um, and then, of course, the CAPS party, the holiday party on the 13th, out off, uh, North Lower SAC, that was fun, we all, a good time, and we got to, uh, see a bunch of, um, mounted elk and deer and other things there, so that was awesome.
That was fun.
And then just a couple of more things, the Community Dinner, uh, thank you to the Galt Sunrise Rotary again. Um, members were up at three o'clock in the morning preparing turkeys, cooking them, doing everything that needed to be done, and it went off without a hitch. Um, and then, of course, the toy distribution with my colleagues on the 15th at Station 44, uh, where the families came and picked their toys up for the holiday season. And then, uh, of course, I was able to attend the Days Inn opening yesterday and Gillies ribbon cutting today, so I just want to thank, uh, the community for being you, being the community. Uh, we live in a great little city and, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday, and certainly a safe New Year as we, as we roll into 2020. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, it was a busy year, a busy time of year for all of us. I, I was just thinking, as we were all saying this, you know, there's so much stuff going on this type of year, but, and we all can't make it to everything, there's just no way. I know I missed a few things I really wanted to be at, I attended the ones I could, but the great thing is that when one, there's always presence from one of us there, so, um, we're always able to hit all those, and it's not really coordinated, it just happens to be that some of us are all there and some are, you know, and so it's great that we can do that. Um, some of the things I did want to mention that I did attend was, um, uh, for one, uh, going back was the toy drive, um, earlier, a few weeks ago, um, even though the rain was, was supposed to be a factor, we did get some people show up, it was great. Laurel Schamber told us that we had more toys this year than we have ever had, um, which is great, because this is a, you know, this is an event that funds just local Galt kids, and so just have something that's localized and have, um, good support of it is great. And then the toy giveaway, um, I know that, um, some of us were there, Rich was there with me and, and Chief was there, and I'm forgetting if I forget anybody else, but, um, great turnout of people, um, just to see in those kids' faces, you know, with Santa Claus and seeing the toy bags and all that, it just makes it all worth it, um, so that was great. Community Dinner, uh, like Rich mentioned, was fabulous, I was, um, thankful that I got to serve at that. Um, thank you for the Rotary, I know, I, I know you were out there pretty early in the morning too, right? Yeah, 3:00 AM, I mean, that's crazy, I mean, these guys, you know, cooked at 3:00 AM. Uh, the dedication by the Rotary and all the volunteers, I don't even know who all of them are, but, um, it's such a great event every year and, um, such a great thing for the community, and I'm glad they're keeping that going. I do have to mention that, um, the Chief wanted me to make sure, I told everybody how great of a gravy pourer he is, because he bragged about it the whole time we were serving.
Four years.
Talked about how good he was with the gravy, he wanted to make sure everybody knew, so...
You saw the technique, that was, that, that takes four years of practice.
Didn't we run out of gravy?
I kept saying, Chief's on the gravy train. So, um, Christmas parade was, um, was actually awesome, like we, seriously, I thought it was going to be a complete dud because the weather was supposed to be really bad. And you know what, the participation, I think we, how many floats did we have?
We had over 60, we had over 60.
Over 60 participate, that, I mean, I, I don't even know if we've had that in previous...
We, we had 64 last year, I think we beat it, I just can't...
Yeah, see, I, I mean, participation, obviously, I mean, spectators were obviously thinner, because the weather was really bad, even though it wasn't raining, it was still cold and wet, but, um, you know, just great that, that people still braved that weather, you know, and did their floats and all that, even though it was, it was terrible. Um, the lighting of the tree, you know, we had a little Clark Griswold moment there, but, you know, it actually made it memorable, you know, we're going to talk about that. Remember the time we had the tree?
The mayor's first official duty?
His first official duty is like, three, two, one, and then there's just like a little link.
My, my heart went out to Jonathan when he was at that...
It, it was funny, though, I mean, it was, it was, it was, it made it memorable, so, um, and then, uh, so I want to thank too, Paul and his family for the hors d'oeuvres that we all had, you know, Paul, that was not funded by the city, Paul and his family paid for all that food that we had at our recess earlier tonight to celebrate, you know, um, mayor and vice mayorship. Thank you, Paul, for that, was very generous. Um, so, and lastly, I'd just like to, uh, you know, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, safe holiday, and, um, hopefully everybody returns back next year safely, so, thank you for one year, one year on council for the three of us, just went by in a blink.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
Did we leave anything left for Paul?
Uh, I just want to say again that I'm very humble and honored with that my fellow council member elected me as a mayor. I'm looking forward a year ahead and using my skill to lead, work with all my colleagues, all the city staff and community. Uh, lots, uh, you know, a lot of events for last couple of weeks, and I think all the council member, all the staff, they already mentioned it, lighting of the night, parade was a huge success, even with that bad weather. Uh, like, had a very good turnout. I attended the Galt Police Award Ceremony. It was great, it was a very great event. I also attend, uh, Senior Luncheon, it's, it's a great turnout, thank you for the Sacramento Community Service. A Community Dinner, thank you for the Rotary's, Sunrise Rotary Club, uh, they make a very hard effort to make that, uh, Community Dinner. I also attended grand opening of Gillies Car Wash, excited to have them in our city, or the city can have more, little bit more revenue, uh, from that business. And hopefully, everybody get a free car wash for last week, or they was doing the free car wash. I also attended grand, uh, grand opening of Days Inn and, uh, groundbreaking of La Cinta Hotel. It is a beautiful building now, as compared for 10 years ago, and then, and that building was abandoned. Thank you, and everybody, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and Happy Holiday. Anybody have any question? If not, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
I forgot the CAPS and the toy drive.
Hey Kurt, so we're adjourned now?
Sounds good.
You know, I could have brought you, um, my laptop, the laptop that's a lap on, you could have typed on that.
All right.